All right, I'd like to call the May 2nd, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Let the record reflect that all council members are present, and votes this evening will be recorded using the city's electronic voting system. It's for a closed session public comment. Madam Clerk, have we received any requests to speak during closed session public comment?
I've received none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. This time, we're going to recess to closed session. City Council will convene to consider public matters. Couple of statements I'd like to make here initially. Members of the public may speak on any matter listed on the agenda, and if you wish to speak on any matter listed on the agenda, please fill out a blue speaker card and provide it to our city clerk at this time. Please also provide the city clerk with any written materials that you wish to be distributed to the city council for any item or for general public comment at this time. And as a courtesy, they will be distributed to the city council members. Now, when it's your turn to speak, the city clerk will call your name to speak on the given item, and as required by state law, please limit your comments on these agenda items to the specific item at issue. Now, if you have any comments on items not listed on the agenda, you may also make those comments during the time allocated for general public comments. Now, finally, please only address your comments to the city council, as staff will only respond to questions from the city council and not from public speakers. When the city clerk indicates, and you see the timer start on the overhead screen, your three-minute comment period will begin. So for tonight, we have our invocation, and that's coming to be provided by Pastor Omar Telles of Pharo Church. And if, there we are, come on up, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we come before you with gratitude in our hearts. On behalf of all those who have gathered here tonight, we thank you for allowing us to be here. We are grateful for the many rich and abundant blessings you graciously give unto us. I especially thank you for these, your servants, for our mayor, for our city manager, for our city staff, and our city council members. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them an assurance of what would please you, and what would benefit those who give, and those who live in and around our city of Lake Forest. We pray for wisdom, we pray for strength, for courage to do what is right and good for all citizens. May we put our interests before the interest of others. And, Lord, in the name of Jesus, we ask for your presence to be evident in this place. Amen.
And thank you, Pastor Telles. Appreciate you coming here tonight. Now's time, as we do with every city council meeting, to honor our country, and we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance to be delivered by council member you. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand at this time.
Please stand up and follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, are there any reportable items that we have from our closed session tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no action to report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, have we received any requests to speak about our closed session public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one request to speak on item number one from Randy Johnson.
Okay.
Oh, good evening, Council. Randy Johnson, longtime resident of Lake Forest. I welcome myself back. You know, this is the city manager evaluation, item number one. And why it's a closed-session item, I don't know. I'm sure there's some law out there that says it has to be, so that's fine. It would seem like the citizens or the residents who pay your salary, we should be involved in this, the city manager evaluation. It seems common sense to me, but nothing is common sense around here lately. Anyway, you know, so I want to give an evaluation myself. Now, does the city operate okay in a successful way? In general, yeah. You know, I don't see that many potholes in the streets out there. There are some, but they get repaired fairly quickly. We do get gouged by contractors. I mean, we pay an ungodly amount of money to some of these contractors for the work they do, and it seems like there's really no oversight on our council. I mean, that is very, very distressing, in my opinion. Also, financial solvency? Yeah, in general, for the time being at least. We don't know what's going to happen here in the future, but imagine if we didn't get that bailout money from the federal government, the American Rescue Act, where would we be at this time? What do you think? It was $12 million, right? We get a lot of gifts from these other state governments, you know? So that's one reason why we have financial solvency, not because of the way she runs the city. Now, I want to address a couple of things that I brought up before, and it has to do with customer-friendly relation aspect of the evaluation. Now, as you know, I brought a problem to your attention with regard to the meeting minutes. They were backlogged as far as 19 months out, 19 months, okay? And I brought it to her attention, she didn't say anything to me. She didn't respond to me directly about it. In fact, I brought it to her attention back in January of 2021. This is the second time. She ignored me. Finally, somebody up in the council said, is it possible to get those brought up to date? She goes, yeah, I guess we can do it. What kind of an attitude is that from a city manager? And then I brought up the fact that the descriptions of the public comments were missing from the minutes. All of a sudden, okay? It just happened to be the same date that we exposed Mayor Voits' $550,000 lawsuit. That's when they stopped. I brought it to her attention again, she ignored me. How is that respect for the public? You had to actually issue a directive to her to restore those descriptions of public comments. I hope that's noted in her evaluation. It shows total disregard and disrespect for the citizens of Lake Forest and transparency, and she should be docked for that. I would give her a D on that evaluation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments we have on closed session, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we're going to move on to our report from our student liaison, and that's from El Toro High School student Sam Kiambau. Sam, come on up.
Good evening. Let's start off with some athletic news. Our girls', our El Toro Girls softball have been on a roll recently. They brought home another CV League champion title, which is amazing. Also, our girls lacrosse will be advancing to CIF as they clinch a playoff spot in their win over Tribuco Hills High School. Maybe some dates. AP exams are in full swing, and students are testing on El Toro campus, and that's from May 1 to May 11. I, myself, have three exams this week and one the next week, so please wish me luck. Prom will be May 13. Tickets are being sold currently, and prices will be marked up in one week. That's May 8. May 19 will be our finale rally, our last pep rally of the year, and I'm super excited for that. Moving on, our class of 2023 will be able to attend a field day where there will be food games and swimming for El Toro's graduate class of 2023. That'll be on May 26. And final exams for the second semester will be held from May 30 to June 1. And June 1, of course, will be the last day of the 2022-2023 school year. And, yeah, from my understanding, this will be my last meeting as the Lake Forest City Council Liaison. So I just want to thank you for, like, just listening to whatever I have to say about our school, and I'm in contact with the next liaison, and he's an amazing guy. I have no doubt that he'll do great next year, and thank you. Go Chargers!
Well, thank you, Sam. We know this is going to be your last report, and you've done a great job doing that for us, keeping us updated and telling us about the successes. At this point in time, we'd like to actually for you to come onstage, and my colleagues and I, we're going to present you with a quick certificate. So let's go ahead and do that now. All right, here we go. Well, Sam, we really enjoyed, you know, reports, and I have it on good authority, I have some information here that says that you're going to be spending your summer at Frost Gelato. I'm just wondering if we come in there, we get extra special customer service? I love gelato, so...
It's going to be a big group to serve.
Okay. You also are playing golf, I understand, okay? And you're also going to be attending Orange County Leadership Camp up in Santa Barbara. Nice place to go there. That's in August. And then I guess you'll be a senior next year, getting ready to graduate. And also, in the fall, you're going to be the new ASB treasurer at El Toro High School. So continue on the traditions of your leadership. So we all just want to issue you a great congratulations, and thank you very much for serving El Toro High School the way that you do. We have a certificate here that I'll just kind of read some of the things on here. It says, "Certificate of Recognition from the Lake Forest City Council hereby recognizes Sam Kiambau for El Toro High School Student Liaison for 2022 to 2023. The City Council and the City of Lake Forest like to thank you for your service to the community and for providing insight to the city council related to student academia presented this day." Congratulations. Let's give you that. We're going to get a picture. All right, everybody move forward here. All right, nice round of applause for Sam, please. Thanks very much, Sam. All right, next we have three presentations this evening, and do I have a motion to approve presentation items four through six?
Move item.
Moved and seconded, let's vote.
And that motion passes unanimously? I didn't get the second to the motion. Who made that second?
Councilmember Voits, and then councilmember you.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you. All right, also, with that, Madam Clerk, could you please read the title of our first presentation tonight?
Mr. Mayor, item number four is the proclamation supporting drowning prevention awareness.
Thank you, and moving over to our Madam City Manager, could you please introduce this item for us?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite Division Chief Bear Hunter up to the podium to provide a presentation on drowning prevention awareness.
Welcome, Chief Hunter. Good to see you.
Thank you, thank you. Good to see all of you again. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Drowning prevention awareness. This proclamation is very important for not only the community of Lake Forest, but the whole county of Orange. As you know, every year, unfortunately, there's tragedies that occur in this county and other counties. If you've been watching the news recently, you've seen a lot of tragedies, drowning tragedies that occurred in Los Angeles County. So this is a very, very important proclamation to help us partner up with the city of Lake Forest as well as the county of Orange. Just a couple tips and things that are very important that I want to share about this proclamation to share with the community. If you own a pool, it's very important to have gates and barriers with the proper warning devices. If you do have children that don't know how to swim, and you yourself don't know how to swim, important to take swim lessons. If you are having an event at your house, or at a clubhouse, or HOA pool, make sure you have somebody there that's supervising everybody in the pool, and most importantly, first aid classes and CPR. And again, thank you, City Council, thank you, staff, for letting us share and getting this information out to the community.
Thank you, Chief Hunter, for this very important information that you provided to us tonight. It is one of those things that is very preventable, and we need to get the word out as much as possible. So appreciate your presence here tonight. Also, I'd like to ask our Madam Clerk, did we have anyone who requested to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any council comments, questions? Councilmember Voits.
Thank you, Chief, and the job that you guys do out there. Obviously, you know my fondness for the Orange County Fire Authority. I'm alive because of you guys, but you guys do a great job. But the fact is, to go into someone's house and try to resuscitate a child that's been underwater is a heartbreaking thing, and I think that Tampa Bay Buccaneer just lost his young daughter this last week back in Tampa, and so it happens to the best of us. And so, thank you for the job you do, and thanks for helping us bring awareness to it.
No, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to our next presentation. Thank you, Chief Hunter. Madam Clerk, item number five on our presentation list, could you please read that title?
This is the proclamation declaring the month of May as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Thank you, and Madam City Manager, please introduce this item for us.
Thank you, Mayor. This item was brought forward by Councilmember you, so at this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to Councilmember you to provide some remarks on this item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Rose. The state of California has a large and diverse population of Asian heritage and cultures. Collectively, we serve and contribute significantly to our community, to our state, and our country, including immigrants who came to this state to build the railroads and lay the foundations of our state 150 years ago, like me. I'm a part of American of Asian heritage, and I know many city residents share the same sentiment here. I'm very excited we officially celebrate Asian American Month in the city of Lake Forest for the first time. I'm very thankful for the support of Mayor Serbo and my fellow council members, and I would like to invite you to come before to die us for the photo presentation here. Thank you.
So we have a proclamation here for the Lake Forest City Council, and then we hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and that's signed by every one of the council members and myself. So, thanks for bringing this proclamation to our attention, Ben?
Thank you for your support.
And Madam Clerk, do we have anyone who requested to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the next presentation item. Please read the title of item number six.
New Employee Introductions.
All right, moving over to our city manager, if you would please introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor. We will have a brief presentation by our deputy city manager, Brett Channing.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I'd like to introduce you to our newest Lake Forest employee, Irina Phillips. Stand up. Irina joined the city of Lake Forest on February 27, 2023, as administrative specialist in the Community Development Department. She previously worked two jobs before coming to Lake Forest, one as a public works intern for the city of Placentia, and the other as an office assistant within the Community Development Department in the city of Manhattan Beach. She also has previous experience working with the city of Tustin. Irina grew up in the city of Buena Park, and she has an associate's degree in paralegal studies from Fullerton College, as well as a bachelor's degree in public administration from Cal State Fullerton. Irina has two sons and a cat, and enjoys visiting new places and spending time with her family, and she also enjoys being involved in her local community and is very passionate about public service. So we would like to, once again, welcome Irina to the city of Lake Forest.
Welcome, Irina. Glad that you're here with us and adding to the quality of our staff here, and have a high bar to step into, but we know that you're very particularly chosen for this role, so we're glad that you're here with us and appreciate you coming tonight, so we can recognize that. Any council member comments? Okay, did we have...
I would just say, enjoy the best city hall in Orange County here.
Yes. All right, and Madam Clerk, did we have anyone who requested to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, moving on to public comments, and I'll read this statement again here for everybody's edification. So if you'd like to make a comment, please fill out a blue speaker card, turn it in to the city clerk, and your name will be called. Comments are limited to three minutes of uninterrupted time per person. The council and staff will not respond to questions or comments during the public comment period. However, if you leave your contact information on your blue card, staff will contact you to address any relevant issues that are raised during your comment. When you are called to speak, a timer will be displayed on the screen, and as a reminder, your three minutes will begin when indicated by the city clerk, and when the timer begins to run, when the timer begins to flash on the screen, you'll have 30 seconds to finish your comment. Madam Clerk, have we received any requests to speak during public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two requests to speak. The first one is Randy Johnson.
Okay, thank you. Welcome back, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, I'm back. Randy Johnson, longtime resident of Lake Forest. You know, I protest the fact that you don't allow staff or the council members to respond back to us when we have questions, Mr. Serbo. Go to the Mission Viejo Council meeting sometime. All the questions raised at the podium are answered by staff, okay, at the request of council, okay? So they're transparent. You aren't, sir, so at least acknowledge the truth. All right. I have two things I want to talk about tonight. The opioid town hall, the fentanyl town hall. Okay, I attended that, and I think four of you were there. I didn't see Mr. You. He might have been there. I didn't see him, though. And I think whoever, maybe the county, allowed us to actually ask verbal questions this time, okay? Not like the homeless town hall here, like children, we had to write it down on paper and hand it in, then we got our answers like five weeks later, okay? So this was better, and I applaud you for that. Overall, it was a good presentation. I made that point during my question. The question or comment I addressed to the panel up there toward the end of the program was about how come nobody mentions where these fentanyl products are coming from, okay? Where the raw materials are coming from, where it's coming across the border? Nobody talked about that at all. Isn't that pretty amazing? Then I raised the fact that, you know, I asked you guys to have a resolution, like you did for the Iran resolution, a resolution to secure the border, to slow the importation of fentanyl into the country. All of you ignored me. And then this MD on the panel said something to the effect that, well, you know, even if we closed the border, according to research, it wouldn't slow fentanyl down. That's a bunch, that's a load of malarkey, okay? I worked at the border. I saw tons of stuff down there seized and confiscated and incinerated with my own eyes. So I know that securing a border actually works. So this is why people don't believe experts anymore, whether it's the vaccines or anything else, because they say these things that don't make any sense whatsoever. Also, the next thing I want to talk about here has to do with a couple of PRAs, the public records requests I submitted to the city. I asked for how much the city paid in legal fees for ordinance 331 and 347, okay? Had to do with the marijuana lab testing and the revocation of that particular ordinance. And I received a statement back from the city attorney saying something to the effect that those records don't exist, okay? How much we paid in legal fees in order to create and revoke those ordinance, they don't exist. That doesn't make any sense at all. And then I looked at the contract with Lake Forest, with BBK. It says that they're supposed to advise the city of what the payments are for. So that information has to exist, and I want an explanation from him, okay, why there's contradictory information here. I sent a letter in to Jennifer Weiss, who's the PRA clerk, and this is the letter I sent her. I haven't received the response back yet. To be fair, I just sent it in on Saturday, okay? No response back yet at all. Why does it contradict what says in the contract versus what the city attorney said in writing in a determination letter he sent me? Please explain that to me.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Jean Leo.
Welcome. All right. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the idea of bocce courts in the city of Lake Forest. Now, there are many outstanding parks in the city, and that could accommodate bocce courts. My name is Jean Leo, and I reside in the city of Lake Forest at Freedom Village on El Toro Road. I'm currently a member of the resident council representing community life and activities. The idea of building bocce courts in the city of Lake Forest is not something to take lightly. Surrounding cities have implemented them, such as Laguna Niguel has three courts, Mission Viejo has two courts, Huntington Beach has four courts. They are meant to be a pastime for all types of individuals, seniors, men, women, children, military personnel, people with disabilities, et cetera. Bocce is really a social game and has many advantages for exercise, brain stimulation, and incorporates some mild to heavy competition. The game is usually played on a soft surface such as artificial grass, crushed oyster shell, and a solid carpet covering. It can even be played on grass or sand, as long as the dimensions of the courts adhere to proper guidelines. Bocce courts can run the gamut from 80 to 90 feet long and 12 to 15 feet wide. Lines are marked to denote halfway and rolling position distances. Some of the basic rules of the game, rolling two types of balls, red or green, and a smaller white ball called a pallino, that's a target ball. Each team can be made up of two players, four players, and each rolls two balls or four balls, depending on how you set it up. I'm probably not going to have much time to go through the rest of it, but I think you get the idea. There are rules and techniques for the game, but they're usually picked up when learning to play and with experience. Because this sport is becoming more and more popular, cities hold various types of tournaments for prizes and medals. There's strong competition ongoing for trophies and town recognition. There's a Southern California Bocce Association for some 10 cities. There's also a United States Bocce Federation. The website can be found at www.usbf.us, and more data for bocce can be found at www.bocce.org. My participation in the sport goes back to being the bocce representative on the sports advisory committee at Laguna Niguel.
Thank you, Mr. Leo. Your time has expired for your comments. We appreciate you bringing this information to us this evening.
Okay, thank you, De.
Any other speakers we have tonight, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or staff have requested specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Have there been any requests to remove an item from the consent calendar, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Motion to move the consent calendar.
All right, let's vote. Oops, sorry. One moment.
Sorry.
I'm Mayor Tim Teddermer.
Thank you. So there is an item on the consent calendar, item 10, which involves Irvine Ranch Water District. I'm an employee of Irvine Ranch Water District, and although I am permitted to vote on this item, I have chosen not to vote. Because IRWD is a public agency, and because I do not work for the department involved in this item, under the California Government Code, I have a noninterest in this item, and I am permitted to vote. However, in keeping with my past practice related to approvals associated with Serrano Summit Development involving the exercise of significant...
Summit Development involving the exercise of significant discretion by the city council, I'm choosing not to participate on that item, and I'd like to register a recusal for item 10.
10.
10. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to consider the other items outside of number 10?
You've got it.
Okay. And a second? All right, let's vote on those items.
And that motion passes unanimously.
All right. And have we received any members of the audience to request to speak on the consent calendar items?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now we're going to move on to a couple of public hearing items, so I'm going to open up the public hearing at this time. And Madam Clerk, could you please read the item title, number 12?
Item number 12 is the Community Development Block Grant Program Fiscal Year 2023-24 Annual Action Plan.
Thank you. Madam City Manager, please help us with an introduction for this item.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Senior Planner Ron Santos to come to the podium to provide a presentation on our 2324 CDBG Annual Action Plan.
Welcome, Ron. Good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor Serbo, and members of the city council. So this item is the Draft Fiscal Year 2324 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. CDBG is a federal grant awarded to the city annually. The grant award is based on a formula that considers population count, poverty, overcrowding levels, and the age of housing units in the city. Purpose of the grant is to assist with providing decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities, principally for persons of low and moderate income. The draft annual action plan provides a staff-recommended funding allocations for fiscal year 2324. This year, the city will receive an award of $520,784, which is 2.2% more than last CDBG funds are used to implement the goals in the city's five-year consolidated plan, which includes rehabilitating, conserving, and expanding the supply of affordable housing, providing housing and support to the homeless, providing needed community services and infrastructure, and providing economic opportunities in low and moderate income areas. The draft action plan allocates $200,000 for housing rehab, including the city's Neighborhood Pride Paint Program, $138,000 for capital projects, specifically curb ramps, $104,000 for administration, including fair housing services, and $78,000 for public services. Curb ramps would be constructed in the southwest portion of the city where the prior phase left off. The plan also provides for expenditure of any program income received during the year. Any funds unspent at the end of the year, including funds allocated for program administration, would be carried over to future years. This year, the city received funding requests from eight nonprofit public service providers. All eight previously received CDBG funding from the city and have demonstrated experience as a CDBG subrecipient in terms of eligible activities and effective use of the funds, record-keeping and reporting, and responsiveness to the city. Staff is recommending funding for all eight, as shown on the current slide. As previously noted, the draft action plan and HUD rules provide for fair housing services to be funded as program administration at the city's option, which preserves additional funding for the other seven applicants. Under HUD rules, 15% is the maximum allowed for, of the maximum proportion of the grant that may be allocated to public services. The draft action plan was made available for public review for 30 days in advance of tonight's meeting. To date, no public comments have been received. Staff is recommending that the city council provide direction on any, with respect to any desired changes to the action plan, close the public hearing, and direct staff to submit the plan to HUD by the May 19 deadline. That concludes staff's presentation on this item. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the presentation, Ron. Before we have any council comments or questions, I'll ask our Madam Clerk to see if we had anyone requested to speak on this item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one request to speak. It's Madeline Hernice.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome back, Madeline.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Serbo and council members. I just wanted to say, thank you so much for the opportunity and consideration for the CDBG Public Services Fund. At Families Forward, last year, we served 31 Lake Forest families experiencing and at risk of homelessness. We're very grateful that these dollars are, you know, a piece of that pie, that very complicated funding pie to make this good work happen. So I just wanted to say thank you in advance for your consideration, and then truly just appreciate your support and the work that we do together. So thank you.
Thank you for those comments. We appreciate the work that you're doing, and it is a team effort for us to help address this situation that we have. I'll move to our colleagues here on the council for any comments or questions. Councilmember voice.
Obviously, all the providers that we partner with are, do a great job for us, but Madeline, thanks for showing up. You know, you didn't have to, because we already know your track record and what you do for us, and we are blessed to call you a partner with us in helping those that are in need. And so thank you for your service. You know, we live in Lake Forest, South Orange County, and people don't think there's people that are under stress, but there are. And so thank you for doing that, and I'll move the staff recommendation.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing first before we do that. And then I will move to, we have a motion and a second to accept the staff recommendation. Let's vote.
Need one more vote, please? That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item, number 13. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the title of that, please.
Item 13 is the Zoning Code Amendment. 03-23-5611, A city-initiated zoning code amendment to add Chapter 9.151 of the City of Lake Forest Municipal Code to establish regulations for housing developments on sites identified in City Housing Element Sites Inventory.
Okay. Lot to unpack there. I'm going to go ahead and open our public hearing at this time, and then ask our city manager to please introduce this item for us.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite our Assistant Community Development Director, Amy Stoneage, to provide an overview of the proposed zoning code amendment.
Good evening, Amy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. The item before you tonight is a zoning code amendment related to implementation of the city's housing element programs. The city's housing element, which is part of the general plan, addresses housing needs and conditions in the city. The element includes goals, policies, and programs that the city uses to guide actions related to housing. In accordance with state law, the housing element is updated every eight years, and it is required to be certified by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, also known as HCD. As you will recall, the final revision of the city's housing element was adopted by the city council in January and certified by HCD in February. The housing element is required to include a site inventory of potential housing sites throughout the city. The site inventory is divided into two tables. Table A includes two sites that are residentially zoned but have been identified as being underutilized. Table B includes 73 sites that were part of the zone change that created the mixed-use zones. This map shows the locations of sites listed in Table B. It's important to note that the sites inventory does not approve any project or guarantee that it will be built on the site. Actual housing is development, is implemented by the development community and will be largely dependent upon market factors that are outside of the city's control. So there's restrictions and incentives for the production of housing and this inclusion of affordable housing on the sites listed in the table B of the city's sites inventory. Before you are the restrictions that are implemented into the ordinance. The site shall permit at least 16 units. The minimum density is 20 units per acre. Residential must occupy at least half of the gross floor area of a mixed-use development. Multifamily residential are permitted by right if 20% or more of the units are affordable, and density bonus may be applied to any project. So also, although the city is already required to meet these provisions in state law, HCD required that the city explicitly include these provisions in our city's zoning code by May of this year. Therefore, the draft zoning code amendment includes these provisions. On April 6, the Planning Commission reviewed the zoning code amendment and recommended that the city council adopt the ordinance. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Amy, for the presentation. Let me ask our Madam Clerk, did we receive any requests to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and then also now open this up to my colleagues on the city council for any comments or questions for Amy. Councilmember Yu.
Mayor, I saw the screening review on May 6, 2023, which is four days later, so I just want a little clarification here. It's on April 6, Planning Committee.
Yes, since May 6 hasn't happened yet, the date is April the 6th. Is that correct, Amy?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, Mayor Pro Tem Teddermer.
Thank you. You indicated that we are already obligated to do this, independent of whether we adopt this tonight. Can you refresh my memory as to where that obligation rests? Is that in state?
Certainly. You'll recall in our housing element that was adopted, there were programs that were set forth in our housing element, and the first program, program number one, actually listed out specific steps that we had to take no later than May, and they listed those items that were here. So it was actually in the housing element that we adopted and that was certified by HCD.
I'm seeing our attorney lean in.
Yes, that's correct. It's also in state law, specifically Government Code Section 65583.2. So this is an obligation we have pursuant to HCD, the government code, and, and now our own code. If we fail to do this, of course, there are repercussions that HCD, that, that HCD could impose upon us.
I understood that part. I was just curious where that rests. Was that through legislation, or was that through?
Legislation.
So legislation was passed that put that in place and became the law of the land. We're just, this is sort of cleanup, if you will.
That's exactly correct. We are, we are mirroring what is currently in the state codes. It will be in the state code, it will be in our code, and in the housing element, as was stated.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I'd like to make a comment, because I know that we've kind of gone through this, and it seems like kind of rudimentary operation, but this is no small task to get this certification through HCD. And Amy and your team have done a wonderful job in keeping up with that, and Gail's been giving us updates as well, and I just have to congratulate you on working, you know, through this very powerful organization that imposes quite a few things on us. And, you know, for us as a city, versus, I understand, 60% of the cities in California have not received their certification. So for us to be able to get through that, getting it done, that just shows the attention to detail and the effort that was put in to get our certification taking place. So much kudos then to you and your team. Thank you very much for getting that done and updating us on this minor little change to get that certification up to date.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, do any council members have a motion and a second to adopt this?
Motion to move.
All right. I think it was motion and, Mr. Pequeno, Councilmember Pequeno, let's vote. Thank you. Okay, let's see. Did we cover the strategic plan? We already did that, did we not? Okay, let's go back to that then. Madam Clerk, could you please help me with the title of item 14, please?
Item 14 is the Strategic Plan Update.
Indeed it is. And City Manager, could you please introduce this item for us?
Yes, I know how much you anticipate your quarterly strategic plan update, so not, as not to disappoint, our Assistant to the City Manager, Sean McGovern, will give you an overview of where we are now that we're in our seventh quarter of strategic plan implementation.
Thank you. Didn't mean to cut you off there, Sean, so good. Glad that you're here.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. As Manager Rose stated, this is the seventh quarter that we provided an update for the city's strategic plan implementation. We're on the, we're on the second year, or, excuse me, we're on the third quarter of the second year. The plan was approved by the city council in June of 2021. It's a seven-year plan document with most of the projects occurring within the first two to three years. Each of those projects, there's 66 of them, facilitate progress towards one of the three major goals identified, identified by the plan. This is the implementation matrix in the back of the plan, and this is how we manage the, manage the implementation of, of the projects and record progress, which we then report to you, the city council. Here's the progress that we've made since the first quarter. Over two-thirds of the projects have been completed so far, and virtually every project has either been started, we've made substantial progress on, or we have completed that project. So we've made a lot of progress. Obviously, we're nearing the end of the two-year cycle here, so that would make sense. We also check the progress made on a per-goal basis. Goal A includes a lot of the long-term infrastructure projects. Goal B, more of the kind of community-oriented projects and events. And then Goal C, I'd say is more of the kind of, kind of internal workings of City Hall, internal efficiency type of projects. So I'll give a brief summary of the projects that we've completed in this most, most recent quarter, and we didn't have any projects that were completed for Goal C, so this is just Goals A and B. First project, Implement Permit Parking Software. We now have a dedicated system to issue parking permits to residents. Previously, we were using a system that wasn't created for creating parking permits, so there were some customer service issues with that. We, we had some complaints with that, and so far, things have been running just a lot more smooth with our new dedicated software that was designed for that purpose. City started the Stay Safe Lake Forest, Stay Safe Lake Forest campaign, I believe, in late 2019, and really, the point of this is to educate residents on how they can avoid being a victim or lessen their chances of being a victim of some of the quality of life crimes that a lot of residents are really concerned about. We've had some issue-specific town halls, homelessness, vehicle break-ins, and things like that are stuff that we try to push out to residents of the community. We also have the catalytic converter theft mitigation programs. Those are very popular, and residents have received a lot of information about how they can avoid becoming a victim of that crime. Despite our inability to meet in person during COVID-19, the city wanted to maintain a presence with the Neighborhood and Business Watch Programs. Those are two different programs. We have about 45 businesses that participate in the Business Watch Program, and about 22 neighborhoods kind of peppered throughout the city that participate in the Neighborhood Watch Program. Things are going well with those programs, and I think going forward, what, we're not hearing questions on who do I call if I need to report a crime, or, I think, gone, gone are the days where people are looking out the window and then running to their home phone to phone the police about a crime. We are getting questions about where do I go if there's a fire and we need to evacuate the neighborhood? What is the city's plan, and how does the city communicate? And let's say if we have an earthquake or some kind of emergency like that. So we think going forward, we might try to implement kind of a preparedness component along with the Neighborhood Watch Program, because that's something that residents have been asking for. We also have a CERT program here. There are about 45 graduates of the CERT program now, and we started a resident-led emergency. emergency preparedness course. So this gives the opportunity for for volunteers who have graduated through the through the CERT system to actually train the next group of CERT candidates. City staff are still very much involved in this process. We're at every, we're at every course, but this just provides an opportunity for a CERT volunteer to get kind of a promotion, if you will, and help train the next group of volunteers. The COVID-nineteen one, the city in late twenty nineteen, or excuse me, early twenty-twenty, started to allow restaurants to provide outdoor dining on a temporary basis. If you recall, this is when a lot of restaurants set up tents outside in parking lots. The permissibility of that was was related to the state-level COVID-nineteen emergency, which ended on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, so that program is now done. Virtually no pushback with having those tents come back in. Most restaurants or almost all of them didn't even have them out anyways. I think it's just kind of natural that folks are comfortable with eating inside now, and COVID-nineteen is in the rearview mirror, so that's a good thing. We completed our biannual community citizen and business satisfaction survey. That was completed at the end of two thousand twenty-two, and we use the results of that survey as part of the strategic plan workshop processes that we had in the beginning of this year. The the good news is that community satisfaction remains high, and in some of those areas where we wanted to see improvement, we were able to document that our efforts so far, particularly in the southwest Lake Forest area, have been successful, so that was good to see. We're not just taking in survey, survey responses and letting it sit on a shelf or actively trying to raise our response scores, and that was evident of that. We started a Lake Forest Leadership Academy graduate course, so citizens have the opportunity to go through a series of courses. That's the standard Lake Forest Leadership Academy course, and graduates of that program were actually in were actually invited back for, I think, two discussions so far on on specific issues. A lot of times, folks that go through the Citizens Leadership Academy course know a little bit more than the average resident on the kind of ABCs of local government here, and they provide good feedback for us when we do these focus groups on specific issues. So so far, that has been running well. The next steps as far as the strategic plan goes, so this is the second-to-last update that the council will get as part of this two-year cycle. The last update is going to be kind of a cleanup update and a review of some of the major accomplishments that we've had in this past two-year cycle. There are a few projects that we've either put on hold or delayed for kind of various reasons, and we'll be able to talk about that next time. The development of the new two-year strategic plan update is currently underway, and that will be brought forward as part of the two thousand twenty-three to twenty-five operating budget. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer questions if there are any.
Thank you, Sean, for the presentation. Before we get to council comments, I'll ask Madam Clerk if we've had anybody request to speak on this matter.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Colleagues, council members, questions, comments? Councilmember, you.
I just have one here, it's related to the SP one. One of the projects, improvement at the Altoro and Petola, and also, I just want to have a little update on that project and potential complete deadline, along with the adjacent emergency repair and how that goes.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We'd be glad to give you an update. I can, I'll put it in in your regular Thursday update, so I can have all the all the facts in mind, but the progress, the the project remains on schedule and is moving forward. We're working through some repairs and some other issues, waiting on some geotechnical reports to come back, is the the general guess, but we'll give you an update this week on that project.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, thanks very much, Sean, for continuing to add to our book on the biggest room is a room for improvement with these updates. Appreciate that very much. Our strategic plan is something that helps guide us and gives us vision for the future, so thank you very much for keeping us updated. All right, Madam Clerk, did we receive any requests to speak? We did that, or didn't we?
Yeah, no requests to speak on this item.
All right, well, we have recommended action. Going to have a motion in a second? Okay. Councilmember, you and Councilmember, Voits, let's vote.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item, Madam Clerk, please read the title of item number fifteen, please.
Item fifteen is legislative matters.
Thank you. Moving over to our Madam City Manager, our legal beagle, for introduction for this item, please.
Thank you. We have a verbal presentation by our assistant city manager, Keith Neves.
Here we go, Keith.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Before you tonight is a letter of support for AB twelve seventy, sponsored by Assembly member Diane Dixon. This would amend the Health and Safety Code, section three, four, one, eight, two, point one, to allow the Lake Forest Successor Agency to receive redevelopment property tax revenues directly from the county auditor controller and enable the county's successor agency to dissolve as planned in September, two thousand twenty-three. This legislative fix will reduce administrative costs for the County of Orange, wind down their successor agency, and ensure the city of Lake Forest will continue to receive property tax dollars. Staff recommends that the city council support the passage of AB twelve seventy and document its advocacy by authorizing the mayor to sign the attached letter of support. The letter of support will be submitted to AB seventies, AB twelve seventies proponents, and the committee is set to review the bill in the next few months. That is all for staff. Mayor and members of the city council, I will turn the mic back over to you.
All right, thank you, Keith, for that verbal appreciation for what we're planning to do here. This is something very interesting, something kind of clean up for a long time, been a long time coming, so appreciate that update. Madam Clerk, have we received any requests to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on to our council comments or questions. Councilmember, you.
Well, I just want to thank for the work of Assemblywoman Dixon. Since the November last year after Red Street, we see the increased activity both from the newly elected congressional woman, Yang King's office and Assemblywoman Dixon's office, and I thank for their work and their representation for us at the state and the federal level, and I'm highly supportive of this work here, and I will move to to move the motion here. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember, Voits.
With the dissolving of the our redevelopment agency, this is something to solidify and bring back to the city of Lake Forest rightfully so, and just to make things quicker and more efficient. So my gratitude to the Assembly and wish her Godspeed in getting it passed, and so I will second that motion.
All right, let's vote. Oh, sorry, one question from Mayor Protem Tetamur.
Thank you very much. Is this piece of legislation solely for Lake Forest? There is no other configuration in the state of California that is happening?
Yes, this is solely for Lake Forest, so we had a unique situation with our redevelopment agency, and we continue to be unique.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, now time to vote.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, moving over to our city manager report. Madam City Manager, do you have any additional reports or information to present tonight?
Thank you, Mary, yes, I do. We had some late-breaking news last week that our deputy city manager, Brett Channing, will be leaving us to pursue his career growth in another agency, so he'll be going to the city of Corona as the assistant city manager. So normally, we would have put this on the agenda, but it was late-breaking news, so I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Brett for all of his work here with us. He's been with us for six years, and he has done an outstanding job with our Community Services Department, as well as Public Information and our Human Resources Division. And so he's also had an opportunity to work with our Community Services Commission, and I know our commissioners will be also sad to see him go, but I look forward to reading about all of his success in Corona, and maybe someday he will come back to Lake Forest to rejoin us once again. So with that, I'd just like to thank Brett for his service.
All right, a round of applause there, a round of applause. Is there an emoji for a sad and a happy? I don't know how we do that one, but anyway, we'll get some more comments about Brett here. Thank you very much, Madam City Manager. Moving on to council comments, let's start with Councilmember Pecano.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of things. On Friday, I attended the Best in the Bravest OC, Orange County Fire Authority's Best in the Bravest lunch or dinner. I was super impressed with how they did things, almost as good as the way the Sheriff's Department does there, Medal of Valor, just kidding, chief. But no, it was great. I I saw, as a matter of fact, one of the firefighters I coached in Pop Warner fifteen years ago, and now he's a fireman, so I was proud of him, and he actually got an award. Must have been the coaching. I went to the Fentanyl Town Hall, it was well-attended. I I actually met the the director of the Health Care Agency, and I went to the Bennett Ranch HOA meeting, was great, and I also attended the Southwest Lake Forest pop-up city hall that we had, and it was well-attended, and got some good ideas from the residents to do. And I want to thank staff for doing a great job, and you, Deborah, for doing a great job, and I think the city is very fortunate to have you as the city manager, so thank you for a great job.
Thank you. Councilmember, Voits.
Yeah, I'd like to thank City of Lake Forest for allowing Supervisor Wagner, chairman of the Board of Supervisors for the County of Orange, to actually host Orange County Healthcare Agency in doing the most successful Fentanyl Town Hall that they've had so far, and so my my compliments to Jonathan and our staff in getting the message out and our residents for coming. If you missed that one, we have another one coming up next Wednesday, May tenth. Come learn how to use Narcan, the antidote to fentanyl overdoses, and so the fact is that it it's something that's taken far too many lives, and so I want to thank the City of Lake Forest for allowing that, and I want to say that, Chief, I was supposed to be at the Best in the Bravest. I was feeling bad that night, but I missed the bagpipes, but at the tip meeting that I went to last night, the award ceremony last week, they actually had the bagpipes. I thought they were going to be the fire, it was actually Orange County Sheriff Department bagpipes, and so they're 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 taking after good precedence with Orange County Fire Authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Backing up one second to Councilmember Pecano.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't have it down in my notes. I didn't know Deborah was going to say her goodbyes to Brett tonight, so, hey, Brett, great job, good working with you, even though you tried to trade me to Lakewood a couple of years ago, I've forgiven you, so we're going to miss you.
Yeah, Brett, obviously, you're you're a rising star, so we can't expect anything else from you to keep rising, so we wish you Godspeed. We'll be sad to see you leave us, because you've been a great addition to our staff, and you've actually helped us to shine, so thank you, and you'll continue your shining there, so come back and see us. I see your dad often, so I'll keep you posted. Thank you. God bless and Godspeed.
Thank you. Councilmember, you.
First of all, congratulations again to Brett, I mean, he's a rising star, he's around my age, but I see a long career ahead, and but I hopefully, you know, one day you come to visit us, and hopefully, one day you come back to work for us as well. And ten days ago, I attended Clean Lake Forest, I'm one of the sponsors there, and thank for the leadership of Councilman Pecano to fund this Clean Lake Forest many years ago, and still is going very strong, along with the work of Settle Back Church. We saw about a hundred fifty people show up to come out to clean our city along, also I saw Mayor Serbo and Mayor Protem Tetamur there as well. And also, right after that, I crossed the street to the Lake Forest Sports Park. We have County Board Supervisor Chairman Don Wagner, along with his office hosting the event, perhaps that include our council member, Voits, there, and we see a lot of nice paths and so many organizations in our community here to to help and rescue paths and support the paths, and it's very good show there, it's a very successful event. Also, I, last Tuesday, I toured a called Heroes Landing, it's a citizen living community, especially catered to veterans in Santa Ana, along with our city manager, Deborah, and the mayor, Serbo. It's a great, successful story there, and I hope they can duplicate their success everywhere else in the in the Orange County, including potentially in the city of Lake Forest. I mean, it's it's very important, we serve those who serve ours, and I'm looking forward to work with them if they ever come to our city. And the last, but not least, I thank all the good work done up by our city staff, and many good things, you know, happen in our city because of all of your good work here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Tetamur.
Thank you very much. Well, Brett, pleasure working with you. I'm apologizing for you having to suffer through fifty or so mayor's minutes when I was the mayor in twenty nineteen, so thank you for suffering through all that, but wishing you all the best. I know we'll stay in touch over time, but all the best. Thank you. So I attended quite a few of the other events as well. I was at Clean Lake Forest. Thank you for your sponsorship for that, that's terrific, and thank you to Councilmember Pecano for keeping that moving forward. I also attended the Pet Expo and the Spring Boutique, and well-attended, both of them are very well-attended. I also got a chance to sneak on down to the Earth Day event at Lake Forest Park, and I know city staff had a booth there, so it was great to see them in that event. They were planting trees and various other things, so thank you to city staff for attending that event. I also attended the Town Hall, Fentanyl Town Hall, so thank you to Supervisor Wagner, Chair Wagner, for for bringing that to Lake Forest, we appreciate that. And I also did have the pleasure of attending OCFA's Best in the Bravest, always a great event, highlighting some of the amazing things that those folks do on a daily basis, and we greatly appreciate it, so thank you to all our public safety folks. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. And then finally, just as a note, for all the comments that we have here from our our council members and our our staff, it's just a way for us to help also communicate to our residents some of the things that we're doing, you know, out there, so just a few items that I have on here as well, the the Pet Expo and the Clean Lake Forest, took my e-bike down there, so trying to be green that day on on Earth Day, so that was kind of fun, getting both of those both events, and well-done, well-organized. Also went to the Heroes Landing that Councilmember you mentioned, and, you know, you look at some of the people we get a chance to meet at these different events, so Kurt Pringle was there, and some of you may know him, and another public servant that I've read his book, I've seen his emails, I've kind of known what he's done in the past, but to have an opportunity to meet him in person and discuss with him and talk about the inner workings of all the way back when he was the speaker for the state, it's just really rich in terms of understanding the public servants that we have in in our community that really shine, so that was a really nice event, and also highlighting the fact that, you know, the veterans only is that particular facility, really great, well-done there. The Fentanyl Town Hall has been mentioned also, have an opportunity to be with the subject matter experts, and they really did a fantastic job. There was a movie that they showed called Death on Arrival, or Dead on Arrival, and very impactful film, and if you haven't seen that, it's a way for people to understand how this epidemic is affecting people that unknowingly are taking poison. And so if that doesn't shake you up a little bit and drive you to action, I'm not sure what else will, but that's an incredible little short clip that they showed, and then the people, the experts that were there, and Perla, this young lady who lost a fourteen-year-old child, you know, to a fentanyl overdose with him buying some medication online, and her advocacy and her passion now for spreading that message and getting out the the word on how we can effectively deal with that situation. Also had an opportunity to do the Best in the Bravest, so that was a great event. Man, they have a lot of awards. That's incredible how many people they recognize, but seeing some of the stories and the film that they they captured in terms of the rescues and just how people even off-duty were doing such great work, and one of the gentlemen who came up, Andrew S. Kevin Hansen, was the son of Jim Hansen, AYSO, didn't even realize he was a firefighter, so another youngster coming up in in the ranks there. And then finally, for Brett, again echoing all the comments here, we really appreciate what you've given to the city of Lake Forest, we wish you nothing but great success, we we hope that, you know, your next career path is something that's going to be very beneficial, we know it well, just based on the quality you've given given to us here in the city of Lake Forest, so thank you for your service and and best success to you as we move forward. And for our audience members here tonight, appreciate your being here to kind of be involved and and kind of look on what we're doing here in the city. We appreciate you being here tonight, and with that, we are adjourned.